Good morning Patty, how are you?
Good morning, how are you? I'm doing alright, thank you. Oh, I know, I...
It's difficult, isn't it?
Um... Okay, so, we had an emergency police, so they gave, they went back up to two car. And just, you know, I thought, I'm not some parent, but, I'm some people, they, uh, they went down and out of the stuff. So that, that whole, that was very nice, that was very cool.
While we're doing, while we're...
We are ready for the public hearing this morning.
Fantastic.
So we will go right into it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Today is April the 27th, 2021, and we are here at the Rockdale County Auditorium, 903 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. And we are calling our zoning public hearing meeting to order this morning. At this time, I think we're gonna do some virtual housekeeping announcements. We'll move right into the invocation, and with the pledge of allegiance, in that order, please. And we will have invocation. Chief Kate.
Let's bow our heads. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour, asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance and...
You notice, it is high intense commercial development to the outside and to the, to the east of the site. It's more sparse residential, R1 and, yeah, R1 residential, so, alright, next slide. This is the updated, the current layout, rezoning site plan. As you see, the 64 units. You see, as there will be access off, south of the site plan, off of Honey Creek, the major roadway going through the middle of the site, site plan. And again, this is just a concept, it's not an engineered plans at this particular point. Gives an idea of the layout. Thank you, next slide. Here we have a proposed facade design to give an idea of, and let me make clear, this is a concept showing the actual exterior. These are two-car garage units, and so, I know this facade shows one, single car, but just looking at the actual, the statics, the features, they want to blend in and be consistent with what's in the neighborhood now. So again, this is just a proposed elevation, next slide. Alright, so how will this rezoning impact this Honey Creek community? Well, obviously, the county has an issue of providing housing. There's a national housing shortage. As you know, it's a seller's market. People are wanting more intense, more closer developed residential options, less maintenance. It would also provide a buffer between the intense commercial institutional land uses to the west and the single-family to the east. And there's also the potential for bike impaired facilities to be enhanced along Honey Creek Road. Additionally, the issue of sewer and infrastructure, it always comes up. We reached out to our RWR, Rockdale Water, and the Sewer Department, and they let us know that the sewer treatment facility has recently been expanded to support any expanded future growth, and 64 units will not affect that in a negative way. Additionally, this project can be connected to two different sewer treatment facilities, one at Snapping Shoals and one at Honey Creek. Schools also come up as well. Anytime you have development in a fast-growing area, you want to know how will it impact schools. And one of the things that our Chief of Staff has been working with us on is every quarter, giving schools updates as to upcoming proposed developments. As you've seen, this particular area, we have Honey Creek Elementary, we have Memorial Middle School, and Salem High School. Each of these schools now are currently well under their actual full capacity. So in other words, this particular unit proposal development will not negatively impact schools as most of those schools in the area, as well as countywide, are under, well under their enrollment. Moving on, changing the zoning from AR to multifamily. Again, it will enhance the property, enhance the community by, again, adding new housing stock to the county. We're a fast-growing county, we need to diversify housing stock to bring more, younger, more diverse individuals to the county. It will be a buffer between the commercial and residential districts that currently exist, the proposed 64 unit. It's, it's in conformity with the future land use map. It is consistent with the policy of the comprehensive land use plan by providing additional housing options for the county. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions for amending the zoning classification from AR to multifamily residential, but the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial in this particular case. And that is it. We'll now open it up for any questions from the board.
I'll yield to both Commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
Yes. Did they have any plans for green space or walking trails or playgrounds or any amenities outside of the, the living areas?
Commissioner Washington, that's a good question. And the site plan that we showed, the proposed site plan, did have areas for green space, particularly dog areas and so forth. But when, during the Q and A, I will definitely defer to the D.R. Horton rep to give us more detailed information. But there are reservations for proposed green space, to answer your question.
And then, you said that this went, because when we spoke about this before, it was just single family, I mean, single-car garages, now the...
Two-car, yeah, 64 units, two-car garages. The initial proposal was over 70, and, you know, after a little back and forth after the PC meeting, and they went back to the lab, and we had some concerns about some of those initial proposals. And so they agreed, again, to make it all two-car units, 64 units, two-car garages.
Okay. And then, has there been any renderings or have they shown us what any, if the inside, what they, what they, is supposed to look like on the inside, like any specs?
Not at this particular time. I don't think we have any interior photos or anything at this time, too.
What about price points?
Price points, we're looking between, starting off 195 to 205 as they go under construction. And obviously, by a lot of part of this year, maybe this time next year, that could easily go to 210 to 220. We're starting off 195 to 205 in that particular area. And if I'm wrong, again, I will defer to our applicant when she has time to answer Q and A.
And I think my last question is, why did the Planning Commission vote to deny?
Well, there's just been some overall, I guess, some back and forth disagreements with what they perceive as the, an influx of townhome requests. Obviously, some of the residents in the area spoke out. They had some issues such as, I mean, just overall not wanting it there. Some of them spoke about issues such as the increase in impervious surface that could occur with this new development. But those ones that said that, it was funny that they mentioned impervious surface, but some of them wanted commercial and more medical facilities. This particular proposal will probably be 35% of the impervious surface of the site. If you were to put commercial and/or medical facilities, it would be a lot much more than that. Another issue was that, again, the, the point about the, they were looking at half and half, 34 single-car and maybe 36 two-car garages. And I think that was another drawback from the PC Planning Commission's perspective. Hence, for them to actually, they dropped the number of units to make sure they could accommodate us with the two-car garages. So it was the number of, the two-car garages, I get feedback from the public, and I think that contributed to their decision.
I know that I said that was the last question, but your answer spawned another question. Has there been any inquiries about having medical facilities or any of the things that the residents wanted?
Well, medical facilities, actually, at the intersection of Honey Creek at State Route 20, there's, there's a, there's medical offices, medical, commercial establishments there and now. And a couple of individuals that spoke when they asked what they wanted at that particular site, they mentioned something like that, meaning that instead of the residential development, because they were concerned about the stormwater and the impervious surface, they mentioned commercial or some sort of medical facility at that. But as you would know, that would actually increase the stormwater and impervious surface a lot more than 64 units, which will only be 34, 35% of the impervious surface for that site.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Williams?
So, we've had conversations before about the width of the street also. Was that taken into consideration?
The internal street or Honey Creek?
The internal street.
The internal street would, they were actually designed as the standard. I want to say it was 22 feet from edge of curb, edge of curb to allow, you know, for instance, for medical...
Public safety.
Public safety vehicles to actually go access the area as well. And they also have spillover parking, and I know parking was a major issue, hence the need for two-car garages. Parking, the driveways would be wide enough to accommodate two cars on either side. But the issue was that the driveways also be long enough to make sure that if people park in those driveways, they are not backed up onto the sidewalks. But the issue, yeah, I think it was 22 or 24 feet from curb to curb to make sure it was wide enough in the event that there was someone where to park on the street, you could still get a public safety vehicle to access that area.
So, I just remember the conversation from a previous application, and we required a certain width, and I don't remember what that width is.
It was like a minimum of 22, and I think, in this particular instance, they're looking at 22 or maybe 24 feet from curb to curb.
Okay. What, what is the square footage of the units?
Square footage, I will have to definitely defer to the applicant on that particular detail, Commissioner Williams.
Okay. I was, I was down looking at that property last night and happened to talk to a resident there. They have some major concerns with a couple of different issues. And one is the number of rental properties. I know we have limited that in the past. Does this have that condition on it?
It can be a condition. Typically, we want to stay, I mean, zero would be optimal, but that's not realistic. Typically, in the past, the two or three that we have approved since I've been here, we kept them at three or even five percent of rental of the entire units. Because there may be the case where someone gets a job transfer, or heaven forbid, someone were to die, need to move or something. I mean, having a zero requirement is a little bit unrealistic, but we definitely don't want a lot of rentals over there. So I think there would be a minimal two, three percent, like we kept the other, other projects we've dealt with here in the county.
So, so when we do that, how is that enforced?
Well, that's something that's through HOA, through the covenants, and so, it's a requirement. And typically, if you look at some of the conditions, whether it was G's Mill, whether some of the other projects that we've dealt with here, we just had it as a condition that, you know, it will go into their, their covenant as they're actually signing their, their bond of properties and all that, that we want to make sure that no more than three percent, or some instances, five percent of these will be for rental uses. And this is something, as you know what's been going on in the region now, we need to take a more of a proactive approach because some of our neighbors in metro Atlanta have had the entire unit sold to developers, and we can't tolerate that here.
No, we do not want that here.
No, we don't want that here, no ma'am.
So, that needs to be a condition as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm pretty sure the applicant is well aware of that.
Okay. What about the buffer between this development and the housing development next to it?
There's a, there's gonna, will be a natural understood buffer, is it 25 or 50? 50 foot, 50 foot understood buffer around the perimeter of the property.
Okay. Alright, then, the last really major concern was traffic. And that concern was because of coming down 20...
Yes, ma'am.
To make that left turn on the Honey Creek. The left turn light only allows for maybe three, four cars, and that left turn lane gets way backed up. And it, my understanding from their conversations last night was it can take 20 minutes sitting at that light before they can turn the corner and get home. So what can we do to alleviate that?
Being that State Route 20 is a Georgia DOT route, we'll have to coordinate and get them involved with it to look at timing, staging for that intersection, the light. That's something I'm pretty sure through our, our county DOT director, we can reach out to Georgia DOT in that regard. But that's nothing that we can actually stipulate here because, again, State Route 20 is a Georgia DOT route, but we can coordinate with them to let them know that we have, you know, a project coming up and a few other developments in the area, and there's a problem with the staging of the light, so, you know, cycling of the light. And so, we have to reach out to them in that because that's their, their right of way.
Okay, so apparently, they have, have reached out before and nothing has been done. I think that's key to approving this 64 townhome development, is that we've got to know that traffic can flow. Because we know that 20 is just constantly busy both directions. And they've got to be able to get home in a timely manner. Or if they run up to, you know, Publix or Target or McDonald's or whatever. They've got to be able to do that in, you know, 10 minutes or so because they live close to those.
So yes, we can definitely reach out to Georgia DOT and explain to them the importance of this particular intersection, and what can they do regarding that signal.
Okay, I would appreciate that before it comes for our approval.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you Commissioners. Thank you Director Johnson. I'm going to just piggyback just a moment or two on a very valid issue that Commissioner Williams has brought up and a very concern. I've actually heard that same concern from some of those residents out there as well. I'm gonna ask if you would yield the podium to Director Moretto. I'm gonna pull onto his experience. Whereas State Route 20 is a state-controlled road, Rockdale County does have influence, and we do have a relationship with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Whenever we're talking about growth and development in our community, through the relationships that we have here through RDOT and our leadership with GDOT, we are able to make them aware of our concerns. Director Moretto, who is our Director of Transportation here in Rockdale County, I'd like for you to just shed a little light on what you're hearing regarding this situation and the concerns that are very valid for the folks out in the Honey Creek area.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, I completely agree that any of these developments, they do cause traffic. I mean, in the case of a 60-some unit, 64 unit, if I'm not mistaken, on average, you're looking at around, a generation of around 640 vehicles a day. You know, on an average, single-family home, 10-vehicle trips per day. So that is extra traffic. That is a pretty good bit of extra traffic. And we are getting inundated with a lot of these developments, and it will tax our infrastructure. And so with that, we need, we sort of put a moratorium in a, in a way on this as far as any, any development with over 30 units, we're sort of looking at, you know, a traffic study now and how that could impact. I would suggest that would be a right, a great thing for this, where they could also look at the State Route 20 timing. Yes, we cannot force GDOT to do anything, but what we can do is we can look at the available capacity there if the lighting was arranged in a proper manner. You know, what the capacity of traffic could be there at State Route 20. And so with that traffic study, we could look and see what potential improvements could be made, what the capacity is there, you know, is there, are there any safety issues? Because as we know, Honey Creek is a, is a fairly narrow road. Because as we know, Honey Creek is a fairly narrow roadway as well, and it has a significant amount of traffic.
So, Director Moretto, and I certainly do appreciate you and your expertise, I'm going to ask for the sense of urgency, this is going through the process, as we well know, and I do concur with Commissioner Williams, we'd like to get as much information that you and your office can gather and bring back from GDOT regarding this particular...
Yes.
The thing about economic development and growth in our community, there has to be a balance. All of these factors must be taken into consideration when you talk about traffic. I was highly impressed, looking at the presentation and hearing the, the impact of our local schools. There will be an impact on every aspect of the community, the schools, public safety, roadways, but, but there has to be a balance. When we talk about transforming Rockdale County into a world-class community, we have to sometimes pump the brakes a little bit and think about what we're wanting and what we're desiring, and what does that look like, considering the people who are already here, thinking about the growth and the kind of tax digest that we're trying to bolster in the community in terms of economic development. We need rooftops in order to do some of the things that our citizens are asking us to do, some of the amenities and some, you know, I get all the time, Commissioners, these questions about restaurants and bistros, and whether it's the Krispy Kreme, or whether it's the Papados, or the Whole Foods, or the Trader Joe's, people asking, why don't we have any of these things here? Well, it's a balance. And what Director Johnson is saying, along with what Director Moretto is sharing with us this morning, that we've got to make some real decisions. I, I'm telling you, the people out at, the folks out in the Honey Creek area have a very valid point in terms of the increase of traffic, but there has to be some give and take both ways, in order for us to sustain this community for long-term growth and development, and to be able to bring some of these things that residents are not just asking for, but in some, some fashions, Commissioner Washington, they're demanding that we get some of these in here, but folks, they're going to do a feasibility study first. Rooftops are considered, all of these things are part of the equation. I want to make sure that we take care of our infrastructure, I want to make sure that we're listening and hearing to, hearing the citizens who are currently living and residing in the Honey Creek area. But I also want to make sure, Commissioner Washington, that we're postured and in the right position for growth and advancement for our changing demographic here in the community. Commissioner Washington?
I had...
Thank you, Director Moretto.
One more, two more questions. Well, one of...
For Director Moretto?
No, for Director Moretto.
Okay.
I'm back to Director Johnson.
Back to Johnson.
Has, has there been a mandate that we do a traffic study on this? And can we make that a part of the conditions? I think we've done it before, where we've made a traffic study part of the...
I mean, obviously, to your discretion, the board's discretion, we can do that, but as Director Moretto just alluded to, that we were considering changing for both residential and unresidential development, certain triggers, certain thresholds that will automatically warrant traffic studies. As he mentioned, thirty or more lots in a residential development. We did not initially do that for this particular development, but again, that's something that, if the board feels as though...
Well, and that's the request, you're absolutely right, it may not be the word mandate, but that's the request. So, moving forward, we've asked Director Moretto to get back with us in an expedient amount of time, so as this development is going through the process, what we don't want to do is not respond to the citizens of Rockdale County in the Honey Creek area, what we don't want to do is hole up this process with the developer in terms of what has to be done through planning and development. So, the request has already been made and asked of Director Moretto to collaborate with the folks at GDOT, to come back in a timely manner while this process is in motion, and provide that information, and we'll move from there.
And then, the next thing, very concerned about visitor parking, or do they have designated visitor parking spaces?
Yeah, the proposed layout, they'd show some areas for spillover for...
Do you know how many?
I don't know the number.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, according to the applicant.
Thirty-nine out of...
Thirty-nine spillover, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, Director Rutledge, I think this is a really good, robust conversation on this subject here. I, I do know that we have time allotted for other folks to come up and speak. Where are we at this point?
For the applicant and for anyone signed up to speak for or against this application.
Okay, thank you, Director Johnson. Who, should we call up next? The applicant?
Ready for the applicant?
Okay, come on up.
Do you mind if I remove this while I'm at the podium?
Go right ahead, yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you all so much.
Good morning.
If you don't mind, I would just like to address a couple of the questions that came up. I'll start with the most recent first, the question regarding the guest parking. So, in addition to the two spots that would be in the driveway, and then the two spots that are in the garage, there are thirty-nine additional parking spaces throughout the community for guests to park. We have been working with staff, and I also met with the Commissioners, to propose this project, as well as the community, and we took all of that feedback, and we've made several changes. This is actually the fifth revision of the site plan, using the feedback that we've received. So, through that, we have already agreed to some conditions that the staff proposed. Of that, one of the questions was about the street width, twenty-four feet is what that proposed condition is, we've already agreed to that. There was also a question about the rentals, there's a condition for that as well. As of right now, that staff recommended condition is no more than fifteen percent, and we have agreed to that condition as well.
Okay.
There was a question about the square footages of the plans. So, Tyrus, if you wouldn't mind, can you please put up the site plan? So, this is that fifth revised site plan. So, what we've done here is we moved from a plan that was initially single-car garages. Then, we had a plan that was two-car garages in the front and single-car garages in the rear. The most recent plan, the plan that we would like to move forward with, is all two-car garages. Because of the unique layout of this piece of land and that fifty-foot buffer, what we've done is on the front portion, the ones that are not shaded in, those units are two-car garage rear entry. So, as you're on Honey Creek Road, you'll see a nice, flat front facade. The elevation that you actually saw in the presentation, because we've gone through so many changes, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for a great presentation, but I'm sure it was just an oversight that it still had the one-car elevation in there. I have emailed both of the elevations to Tyrus, I don't know if he's able to open those up, but the ones that are in the front are the units that we call the Ashley, so that's the rear car. So, the garage is in the rear of those, so there'll be some alleys there. Those units are just under seventeen hundred square feet. The ones that are in the rear are our S-line townhome plans that we actually pulled from another division to use specifically for this project, because we wanted to be able to accommodate what the citizens and the staff were asking us for. So, we searched our other divisions and found a product that we'll be using back there. The average square footage on those is one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one square feet, and those are front-entry two-car.
You said one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four?
Sixty-one square.
Sixty-one is the average.
That's the average for those plans, because it's actually three that are within that plan set, so they'll be mixed up.
Okay.
The price point, there was also been some confusion about that, with it being all two-car product, the start, starting price point will be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The range...
Feel much about that, feel much, I'm going to just slow you down a little bit there. I'm going to be honest, I heard a sigh from this whole board when we heard the number one ninety-five. We, we really have some concerns, this is closer to the price point that we're more interested in, and I'm hoping, I don't like to assume, but I'm going to ask you, with this price point right here at two fifteen, is it safe to say this is on the lower end?
Yes, sir. That is the starting price point that is estimated as of today.
Okay.
If we receive approval at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, then we will begin our engineering work at that time. With a project of this size, depending on what we find during that engineering work, is very likely that by the end of this year, beginning of next year, you would see dirt starting to move on this project, meaning that it would probably be around fall of next year that we actually began selling these units. So, a lot of times, things are market-driven, if you've been watching the news lately, you know about the cost of materials and how they're skyrocketing. So, it's very likely that by the time we do actually begin selling units, that that price could change. So, as of right now, it's two fifteen, starting with the range being two fifteen to two thirty.
I really appreciate it, I'm sure that both of my colleagues do as well, I really appreciate you clearing that up and pointing that out, because, let's just be honest and be real about these price points, it dictates a lot of the demographic that you have coming into a community, because I, I just really believe, Commissioners, when you talk about paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and more for a piece of property, you're going to get somebody that halfway got some sense coming into your community, and they want to be able to take care of their product, property, and make sure that the aesthetics and the cleanliness of the property. I, I also believe that this allows for the developer to market and reach out to those young professionals that are out there in the market, as I was reading in the Georgia Trend Magazine just a couple of days ago, that there's shift, and the wind is moving to the east. There was a few, just a few years ago, everybody wanted to be in Hotlanta, but now, these young professionals are considering places like Rockdale County for different, and the price point, and amenities, Commissioner, has a lot to do with those things. But what we're hearing is also, not only are they're looking to come east, they're saying, and there's that word balance, a lot of what our current residents are saying too, we want more options and alternatives in terms of eateries and places that are retail establishments. So, there's the balance, traffic is very important, safety and all those things. I'm going to let you finish, but I think this was very important, that price point, because I, I'm telling you, there was a sigh right here when we heard that other number a little while ago, but go right ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, there was another question regarding how would certain things be enforced? So, there will be a mandatory HOA. I cannot tell you the time, since I've been with this company, that we have built a community without a mandatory HOA. And I do believe that it is one of the conditions as well, that we've already agreed to with staff, in any case. So, there will be something in there about those rental restrictions, there will be things in there about keramition it, as well as street parking, because I assume that's where you were going with your question about the width of the streets. These are public roads as well, we are not looking to make them private roads. So, any action that a citizen of Rockdale County could take, if something was happening on any other road in the county, they can take within this community as well to address that. So, there will be a mandatory HOA. There was a question also regarding the amenities in the community, so I know, Commissioner Washington, that was very important to you, so that was actually one of the first revisions that we made to this plan, was to actually go back, and the screen has changed now, that there is a dog park in the community, there will also be connectivity throughout the community with sidewalks that are throughout, so there's not a walking trail, per se, like a natural one, but you will be able to walk throughout the sidewalks throughout the community. There's also another open space area that's in the community, we have not, as of yet, said, you know, whether that'll be a fire pit area, a tot lot, or something like that, but it is an open space that will be utilized, is right there behind the mail kiosk area. So, there is lots of natural amenities within this community. If the Commissioners have any further questions for me, I would be happy to entertain those at this time.
Commissioner Washington?
I don't have any questions, but what I will say is that this is come, almost a completely different development than what you presented in, in the beginning, and I don't, I don't think, I was very hap, well, I know you know that, I wasn't very happy with a lot of things in that first rendering, and I thought that you all could do better, and I thought we deserved better, and this is much better than what we got the first time. So, I appreciate you all coming, and at least thinking about our community. Now, if we can get this traffic thing together, I think.
Commissioner Williams?
So, I would like to see that the rental limit, similar to our other developments at five, five percent, no more than five percent rentals. Chairman, you made a comment about young professionals, many of our young professionals leave the county to go to work, or living in that space, they're, they're going to come north, and that traffic issue comes into play again.
Yes. Well, thank you, you were very clear and very thorough with your presentation. I, I just want to echo a couple of sentiments, and then we'll move into to hear from other folks here. I do too appreciate that this is the fifth revision. What that tells this board is that you all have been actively communicating with the residents that who are going to be right in this immediate area of this particular development. I do appreciate knowing that there will be a mandatory HOA with this development. The other fact, you pointed out, the thirty-nine additional visiting-type parking spaces. I know that Commissioner Washington has pointed this out with every development, and, and to hear that clear number, because these are the concerns, when you tie in the traffic concern, and the folks who live in, in our area, in our county now, particularly in that Honey Creek area, these are concerns that are very valid, and we want to work, as we are, with the developer, to make sure that, number one, you're listening to the residents, and that we're listening to the residents. So, when this comes back full circle, Executive Director Rutledge, we want to make sure that Director Moretto has ample amount of time to do his research and collaborate, Chief Cabe, with GDOT, to gather as much information as possible. One of the things I say to the staff all the time, Commissioners, we like to focus on the word can, more than we focus on the word can't, but we're also going to stay in the area of reality too. So, we're going to look at exactly what the information yields that they bring back to us, and try to make sure we create that word balance. So, thank you so much. Where are we at this point, Director?
I think if we have any public comments right now, we are probably ready to go into that.
Public comment?
Director Rutledge, yes, we have two individuals that are here in person, we have Ms. Elaine Nash and Mr. Mark Griffin, and Mr. Kellecheck is here as well, and I think there's some individuals that logged in virtually, but being that there's only ten minutes, I'm not, I'm not sure if those virtual ones will have time, but three individuals here, we do have cards for those individuals.
Okay, if you would get those cards up, I'm going to go ahead and yield to Ms. Nash, and ask Ms. Nash to make her way to the podium.
Can we bring a mic to her, so she doesn't have to get up?
We, we could, we could do that.
Can, Ms. Nash, we're going to bring a mic to you, so that you don't have to...
Just take the mic off the thing, just take the mic off the thing, Director Johnson, just take, hand it to her, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's difficult to get up.
I understand.
My comment, first comment, is if you could pull up the first screen that was presented, there seems to be an anomaly between the amount of acres. That one said thirteen point two acreage, but the, the original zoning thing that went out is ten point three five. That's three acres of land, and this development has, is almost too big for the site. Now, are all the things that have been proposed for green space, increasing the, the street from twenty-two to twenty-four feet, what acreage is actually the factual acreage that is being used? Is it ten point three five acres, or is it thirteen point two? And I was surprised with that, that same question I, didn't get answered at, at the Planning Commission here, as to which was actually the factual acreage. Now, the other, one of the other things that, my objection is still the same as to spot zoning. This is a beautiful area, Bramley has some of the prettiest houses. Whoever built that particular section of the subdivision that this particular thing will back up to, they're beautiful houses. I don't know exactly how much they cost, but they are very, very attractive. And if you build more houses like that, yes, you will, you will get people that will enjoy living here. One thing that was not brought up is the Honey Creek traffic. Honey Creek has close to ten thousand cars a day on it, and the Honey Creek traffic, I think, because the signage is forty-five miles an hour on basically Honey Creek Road, we can do a traffic assessment within our own, I mean, our DOT can do a traffic assessment also on Honey Creek Road, because we have... because we have three schools that empty out on Honey Creek Road. There is Memorial, there is Salem, and there's the Young Christian School. So we have a fair amount of traffic that goes and comes that route. And a number of school buses that also can back up things coming and going, both with DOT and with the county. I still think that, and I would dispute, and I'm sure the stormwater people, you don't go from two houses per acre, which usually gives you about 25% impervious surface, to putting 64 housing units on a 10 acre plot and just get 35% impervious area. You will be clearing a forest, which has a great infiltration coefficient. But the coefficient, when you put, when you grade it and put parking lots and a very little amount of green space on it, it doesn't, I mean, it produces much more stormwater. And stormwater again is an issue as far as I'm concerned because I have a pond on the 14 acres that I own and I don't want it overwhelmed. Already have one stormwater detention facility on another, another piece of property that backs up to me that stormwater is trying to get fixed now. And I'll pass it on to whoever else you can.
So if we could stop the clock for just a moment, because I think we only have about six minutes left for the opposition side, and I think we have two more to speak that are actually present. So if the next one could come up to the podium, Mark Griffin?
So at some point, can we get an answer to her question about what is the actual acreage?
About the acreage. And I think I saw a hand up back there. So Mr. Barr, if you could come up to the podium, please. I think he had an answer. He was, uh, thank you.
So it is on that, that 13?
That was 13. The 10 was the one that they didn't...
Okay. So the confusion was in the initial stages, DR Horton was in the process of acquiring a next door property as well. And so that would have increased the actual acreage. And so I'm hearing from my director that it is the 13. So I just wanted to confirm that for everybody. And then I believe, do we want to, did you guys want to answer to the remaining questions?
So you're saying that, that DR Horton has purchased?
No, they did not. And so there, there is some back and forth on them phasing the project along if they acquired the additional parcels. And so the first phase would have been smaller, but because that second parcel wasn't acquired, they went ahead and just fully developed the initial parcel that we see today.
So where did the, where did the 10 acre number come from?
That was just from preliminary discussions and I believe that somewhere along the way it just stuck on one of our ads.
So, so, so as a point of clarity, clear communication, how many acres have been secured at this point?
This parcel in the, because I thought it was on the first page of the county, but as far as we are aware, it's 10.35.
10.3? Okay, perfect. Does that work? Our legal ads were correct?
Good. I'm glad to hear that. 10.35. Okay.
Thank you. That brings clarity. We understand that the developers looking at some other future opportunities which could possibly grow it, but that answers the commissioner's question with a clear point. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Mark Griffin, please.
Can I remove my mask? Is that okay?
I think so, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me speak this morning. We met once a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Voted for you. Anyway, I'm in total opposition. My name is Mark Griffin. We live at Carillion subdivision, which kind of backs up to this, this development. We used to live at Fountain Crest. I have a lot of family there. My brother-in-law lives there. I married his sister. And beautiful Jamaican woman. Anyway, we are in total opposition against this development. I mean, yesterday we sat up at the corner of Honey Creek and 20 to turn left, as you were speaking about earlier, Commissioner, and it took us 25 minutes. The traffic was not that bad. You're going to add another 100 to 200, 300 people in there, it's going to be catastrophic, I believe. And the only interest I see is from Honey Creek. There's no other entrances, correct me if I'm wrong, to this development. So I move, I mean, I'm just recommending that they use more, use more of a common sense approach to this development and put some other type of facility there that would be better for the communities. The houses we live in, Honey Creek area, Summit Creek, Carillion, Fountain Crest, their houses range from 250 up to 450. The one across the street from me, they're building, it's in the high fours. I'm just throwing that out there. We've been there about three years. We love it there. I'm retired from Grady Health System and from the military. So this is where we would like to stay. A lot of children live over there and we would like to just keep it, you know, the way it is for now. But, you know, I understand it's going to be rezoned. I understand probably this is going to happen, but I just ask for a more common sense approach to this and the development of this area and this property, this strip of land, beautiful strip of land over there that backs up to this young lady's property too as well. So that's all I have to say. I do appreciate your time, but it, it does appear to me that, you know, single family homes this day and age, this county and the rest of the country are being sacrificed for development of other types of facilities. Granted, hey, I live in Anacostia Housing Projects in DC, so I know everybody's got to have a place to live. I understand that. But as the commissioner spoke, these price points are very important considering the demographics of people that come in there. They just do. You got to use some common sense. I'm not being prejudiced against anybody. I'm just saying. And, you know, I really think that's something to take into consideration. They're putting a lot of people in a small area right there. And I really feel retiring from EMS, you're going to have a really, really catastrophic area there. There's wrecks up in that area, vehicle, motor vehicle accidents almost on a daily basis. So they happen a lot. So close proximity, a lot of homes, a lot of people. I don't think this is a good idea. We're in total opposition against it. I appreciate your time and letting me speak and I hope that you take this into consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Certainly appreciate your approach and you coming out.
Mr. George Kellacek?
Good morning, everyone. I of the Taxpayer Association is in total opposition of this rezoning. Also, last night after the Splotch meeting, I went out and got 30 signatures from the adjacent neighborhood for you. This morning I sent over 50 videos or 50 pictures to you all from existing townhome subdivisions in Rockdale County and the city. And I don't know if you've had a chance to view those pictures, but you will see the deplorable conditions of those two townhome communities that has happened in the last 30 years. I know we can't predict the future, but looking at this from a developer standpoint that I am, a real estate investor and a citizen of Rockdale County, HOAs go away. I've seen it time and time again. If you want to have this type of development and the, and go out to the spot, if you would, and look at these subdivisions on Flat Shores Road and Salem Road, you will be appalled at what you'll see there. And that's why I took the time to take those pictures yesterday. Some other items, why we're in opposition. Number one, from Zach Research Incorporated, there is a lower rental potential than single family homes. There is slower appreciation rates, which leads to lower tax increases for Rockdale County to pay for crime control, water and sewer, stormwater, and Sheriff Department protection. You will not get your money back out of a townhome subdivision as you will a single family home. There's a lot of research and I can provide that to you. Secondly, we, as a member of the State Board of Rockdale Water Soil Conservation District, we would want to see this impervious area analysis. As of right now, it does not look to conform to this piece of property. It would be between 30 to $250,000 for the developer to put in an acceleration and de-acceleration lane on Honey Creek Road. Okay? There's already three quarters of mile backup, whether you're coming onto 20 or exiting off of Honey Creek. There's over 1,200 vehicles from the, just the two subdivisions next to this proposed townhome community and over 1,200 from the Honey Creek subdivision, not including the traffic from the other schools. So take the opportunity to look at those pictures that I sent to you at 4:00 AM this morning and...
Got to pull them up.
Thank you very much. And I'll provide you at whatever moment that you need the petition.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public comment side for opposition. And I don't believe we have any more time allocated. So Director Johnson, was there time for rebuttal from the applicant or are we ready to move on to the next two items?
So can I just comment that I see Candace Teague on Zoom and I did receive an email from her yesterday in opposition to it.
So we can put that into the record?
Okay. I will send you that. I will send you that email then.
Yes.
Director Rutledge, we do have the applicant here. She would like to, I guess rebuff a couple of those comments from the last three speakers.
Okay.
Hello again, commissioners. Thank you so much. Just a couple of points here. There was mention of the impervious surface. So impervious surface does actually allow by your staff, by the county that has in the past studied for your future land use and such. For this piece of property is 60%. Our proposed impervious surface is 39% here. We do have a stormwater facility that is in the rear of the project as well to take care of stormwater for that piece of property. We are extremely committed to being in Rockdale County. This is the first project that we're bringing before you this year, but we are actively looking at others, which is one of the reasons that we have made five revisions to this one. We would like to see this project work so that we can continue to build and grow in Rockdale County. I have taken notes today. There are some things that I will discuss with my team to see if there are any further changes that we can make. We will continue to work very closely with the staff, including your DOT director as well now, to see what can be done from our perspective because as you all are aware, you know, the county has to partner with developers as well and make sure that we're planning properly for growth in your area. But we will have those communications and do everything that we can to make this project a success.
We certainly support that and we do appreciate the ongoing communication between yourself, your organization, and our residents here in Rockdale County. It is imperative upon the Board of Commissioners that we hear from the citizens of Rockdale County and, and take into deep consideration all of the things that they're bringing forth to us regarding this development and any other development. As I stated earlier, the word balance has to be applied as we move the county forward and listening to our citizens at the same time. So we appreciate that. We also appreciate your level of patience because it's all about building the right relationship and making sure we come up with a finished product that can create a win-win scenario for all of the people concerned. And that includes developers and taxpaying citizens of Rockdale County.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Johnson, I believe there's two more text amendments to go.
Uh, yes, ma'am, Director Rutledge. Yeah, we can pull the presentation back up.
And we're going to be conscious of our time as we move forward here because we're going to be making a transition shortly. We're going to take care of the business that...
These should move fast. These should flow.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Director Johnson.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item, item B is, excuse me, item, yeah, item B is a text amendment case 2021-07. These are definitions that have come up a couple of times in the past. And basically we're reviewing, we're removing these following definitions from the scope per discussion with our planning commission to have further clarity on what is a truck stop based on the amount of diesel pumps, as well as what's personal agriculture. At a later date, we'll provide a better definition to allow in all residential districts and all districts as what exactly is personal agriculture. Next slide. We looked, we're going to also revise what is general farming, what is a mini warehouse. We added the self-storage unit to this definition. And also what is, I guess, in essence, a residential district in parentheses, a residentially zoned property. Again, some of these zoning districts, this will again, will be revised at a later date as well. Next slide. And this is something that the planning commission as well as staff both recommended approval on. Again, you've seen this before. So, all right. Next item is item C. Okay, 2021-10. This is a revision to the truck stop definition, but without going through all these items here, the basic crux is that any, any gas station or gasoline convenience store that has more than three pumps solely, only for dispensing diesel fuel will be designated as a truck stop. As you know, now you can go to the Quick Trips, you can go to a BP. There is a diesel pump on the end of most pumps now, but if there are three pumps that are solely only for diesel, that will help constitute definition of a truck stop. There's been some confusion in prior years as to what truck stops are. And some of those truck stops buildings had restaurants and things on them, but this right here will help clear it up. And gasoline station with the convenience store again, solely three pumps. Also, the restaurant and restaurant fast food, because some of these establishments had on the side of them, restaurants or eating facilities, wanted to make sure that you could have the eating facility that's not necessarily a truck stop. The truck stop was adding a lot of confusion. So we had to go through and clear all these up. And so as you see, restaurant will include full service, limited service, and, and fast food. And then restaurant, fast food is also as a limited service restaurant. Again, the issue was just to make sure that certain uses are not designated as truck stops when they clearly are not, but unless we went in and polished up these definitions and so.
I really appreciate you saying that, Director Johnson. There's been a good bit of confusion, particularly here in Rockdale County. There's a new term or most recent term over the last 15 to 20 years. It's called travel center. As you identified, the retail outlets and the restaurants inside of some of these facilities, using the scenario of a Love's or a Quick Trip or a Flying J, they no longer have solely what is called a truck stop, but a travel center where there could be a family of people traveling. You have an array of amenities and options, restaurants, retail shops, the whole nine yards. So I think finding a way to incorporate that definition in there is what I'd like to recommend and suggest this morning. The term travel center is a more modern term in terms of what's happening with our motorists out on the road, not just what we remember from the eighties, the seventies and the sixties as a traditional truck stop, but more of a travel destination center.
And if we're not careful, even with those travel centers, with the amount of bays, the amount of big truck parking and amount of, again, diesel pumps, it will still register as a truck stop. So there is some, some additional scrubbing we need to do in this because right now that will consider a truck stop unless we go back and kind of fix our definition. So.
So, so perhaps you can just include the word travel center as, you know, synonymous or, you know, adjacent, expansion of truck stops?
Right. We, we can make that a separate definition. So as, as the chairman mentioned, if we want to have those, that they will not be just considered just under the guise of a truck stop. So we could actually go back and do that.
Commissioner, you have a thought?
Well, I don't want to exclude the possibility of having certain brands have the, the nice, like if, when you, you can sit and, and actually eat at the, the, um, the facility. There are gentlemen on, at certain facilities that they sit there in the, all day really, and they play spades, they play dominoes. They, you know, it's actually a communal place. So I don't want us to not be able to have those kind of things in trying to get rid of a truck stop. I want us to still be able to have a certain, if, if somebody's...
Are you referring to a travel center or a restaurant, Commissioner Washington?
So I don't even know if they're considered travels. I don't know what they're considered.
Well, I, I, I don't want to put words... Well, uh, uh, I don't wanna put words in the Commissioner's mouth, but I know exactly what she's describing, and really, it does fall in the line of a travel center. Um, the old term and the old terminology does apply. Truck stop does apply for those places who've not upgraded and come into where we are now in twenty twenty-one. There are some existing facilities that still look like they did in nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy and beyond, but that's not what we're talking about. I wanna make sure that we don't box ourselves out here in Rockdale County for opportunity, growth and development. This new phrase, travel center, if you've been down to Orlando, you've been to, uh, anywhere, um, north or south on Interstate seventy-five or eighty-five, there's no way you could have not come across these, uh, new modern facilities called travel centers. And she's right, when you can, you can go there and it's really a one-stop shop, uh, whether you a, are a trucker moving down the interstate or whether you're a family that's on a vacation and you wanna be able to stop at one facility and, and take care of all of your needs, um, uh, whether it's just simply rest or, or whether you need to pick up fuel or, or any other type of snacks or what have you to move forward. So I think, don't, we don't wanna belabor this meeting, but I think there's an opportunity-
Yes.
For the Planning and Development Department to do some research on this term that we're using, travel center, and I think at the appropriate place to incorporate that. I think we, we've gotta kinda, uh, educate and retrain our, our culture here in terms of, uh, what's out there on the market, that we don't box ourselves out, because some folks will continue to misuse or abuse the term truck stop versus travel center. So we wanna make sure that we're saying what's happening now, absolutely.
Understandable, and that's something we can do, again, further research will be-
Next slide.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak on either one of these items?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Commissioners, any closing remarks concerning this zoning public hearing?
No.
Okay, all right. I do wanna remind everyone that no decisions by the board will be made from this, uh, meeting this morning, this hearing this morning. We certainly appreciate all the feedback and input coming from our developer, our citizens, as well as staff concerning these items that were before us this morning. Uh, Chief Cabe, I wanna yield to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, our PR staff has requested a five to seven minute break, uh, to reboot technology due to some technical difficulties before the board meeting starts, if the board is willing to indulge.
Thank you, Chief. So that, we will conclude this, uh, meeting at this point. We will take at least a ten-minute break, uh, and give Public Relations an opportunity to make the technical transition. Thank you so much, this meeting is adjourned.